Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the first Post Falls City Council meeting of 2018. Clerk will note that all council members are present with the exception of Betty Ann Henderson, and as it would be a very short meeting for Betty Ann, she is excused tonight. I would like to welcome, we have some students from Kerry, you all appreciate this, Coeur d'Alene High School.
Representing.
Kerry and I, and there's more, so Kerry and I kind of do double duty, I was Coeur d'Alene High graduates, but loving Post Falls, so welcome. And I told them they picked a good meeting, it should be fairly short, so, you get your credit. Are there any declarations of conflict tonight? Are there any amendments to the agenda?
I move to amend the agenda to include an executive session under Idaho Code 74-206 subsection B to address information obtained after the original agenda was posted.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Shelley, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the December 19th, 2017, City Council Special Meeting. Item B is payables, December 12th through December 22nd, 2017. Item C is sales agreement between the Post Falls Police Department and Officer Cody Robertson for the purchase of retiring K-9 Andor. Item D is St. Joan of Arc Annexation Agreement File Number A-16-05. Item E is closeout of the Post Falls Senior Center Community Development Block Grant. And item F is annual road and street financial report for fiscal year 2017.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
On D, item D, just curious as to why it took a year from the time we heard this till we're now seeing an annexation agreement?
Rob Paulus will answer that.
Councilman Borders, Rob Paulus, Assistant City Engineer, a lot of the delay came as there were some issues on how the Diocese of Boise was handling the paperwork and getting things to our standards before it got completed. And we had been in contact with them throughout the process and worked with them, but it was mainly an issue on their side.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, thanks Rob. I have a question on Andor.
Yes.
I knew he was retiring, and we've got a new K-9 onboard in training, where are we on that?
Mayor Council, good evening. We did select another dog and brought him back here, but the training did not go well, so the dog is actually headed back to California and will be selecting another dog at a later time.
Okay.
So for right now, we're going to have one K-9 here in Post Falls, but we've got good agreements with the Sheriff's Department, they have three dogs, the city of Coeur d'Alene has two dogs, so we've got Canines available if we do need them.
There was an article in the paper the other day, and I had to chuckle when I read it because it talked about someone resisting arrest, and they were going to release the the dog, and they did, and the gentleman was treated for dog contact at the hospital, so I thought that was very accurate.
That's what we call it, yeah.
So I thought it was good. Anyway, we'll keep us posted on that.
The dogs can always win.
Slobbered all over him, that's right, I'm sure.
If there's any other questions, entertaining motion.
I'd move for approval as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up tonight is unfinished business, and we have none, followed by ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations. Let me, before we get into the swearing in, we do have one announcement. Post Falls City Hall and City Business Offices will be closed Monday, January 15th in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day, annual holiday. With that, we're at swearing in, how are we going to do this? Want you to come down here?
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of Mayor of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, according to the best of your abilities?
I do.
Thank you. And Kit's going to take a picture.
Oh, a picture.
Photo bomb, Lynn.
Yeah, jump in there, Joe.
I need Counselor Wolf, Wilhelm, and our new Counselor. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of Counselor of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, according to the best of your abilities? I do.
Congratulations. I was going to try to find a picture that I remember seeing of our new Councilman, probably thirty, no, I'm sorry, forty-five, forty-six years ago. You may not realize this, but our new Councilman was, as I believe, as I recall, the fastest guy in the state of Idaho, if not one of the fastest. And there was a picture of Steve at a state track meet, I believe, that was in the Coeur d'Alene press, and he had the weirdest expression on his face, and I thought, if I could have found it, I would have shown it up here, because I'll never forget that look. Steve, welcome, glad you joined us.
Thank you so much, Rob, I'm glad to be here. I'd like to thank the citizens for having the trust in me, and I'll do a good job for you.
Next item up is the election of City Council President, do we have a nomination coming forward?
I would like to nominate Linda Wilhelm.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second, any other nominations? Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Tonight, we have... No public hearings, my computer's being slow here. Care with me. Is that right, no public hearings?
No public hearings. Correct.
No public hearings tonight, followed by citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If you care to address the council, come forward, state your name, and we'll give you five minutes. Mr. Rubin?
Your wife missed your swearing in.
Good evening, Barry Rubin, Post Falls, and Happy New Year to everybody. This Saturday passed, I had the opportunity to watch one of our snow plowing crews go up and down my street, and fully realizing the nature and content of the snow ice, et cetera, and the difficult job they do, I'd like to suggest that perhaps each individual street be looked at on its own tactical values as far as how the plowing is conducted. In this particular example on my street, there are only driveways on one side of the street, the other side of the street has no houses facing the street, and therefore there are no driveways. Yet, in this case, as it has been in the past, the plow puts snow on both either side of the street, thus making it almost impossible for some of us to get out of our driveways after this huge anti-tank berm was placed in front of the driveway. Fortunately, I was able to flag the driver down, and he was kind enough to kind of dig me out a little bit. My point being that in this particular case, I could see no reason for all of the snow not to be plowed in one direction up against the side of the street where there were no driveways, no obstacles, et cetera, even if it meant that the street was reduced to one and a half lanes, which it usually is, or one lane anyway, after all the snow is pushed off to the side. I'm not sure what their doctrine is as far as how they remove snow, if they do it one way by the book and don't take into account any opportunities to deviate, but I think each street, as they're doing it, perhaps the drivers, difficult job that they have, which I'm fully cognizant of, should step back and take a look at exactly how the streets are manipulated and how they're formulated, and snow, remove the snow accordingly. And I should say, the same thing occurs down singing hills itself, where it's a divided medium, and yet, rather than pushing all the snow on both sides of the median onto the medium, they do in fact push some onto the driveways and some onto the medium, and I cannot really see why everything just can't be pushed right onto that medium and give us elderly and not as physically capable people the opportunity not to have to get a flamethrower or blast our way through this stuff. As I say, this driver was very, very nice and reasonable, and I thanked him for his efforts, but I think in this particular case, this was clearly an opportunity to maybe deviate a little bit and push it all off to one side and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. So that's all I'd like to say, if anybody from the street people are listening, maybe they could just instruct their drivers to take a look at the lay of the land first, and maybe think, yes, we can do this and save everybody some heartache and barebacks at the end of the day. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thanks, Barry, just so you know, I'm going to make a couple comments about that a little bit later on, but we did meet on that today, so I'll give you some info.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Robert?
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm also going to touch on our snow removal. My timing has been absolutely perfect this last week. The two times that the plows have come through our streets, me and my other three neighbors, we have the four corners there at Ridwood and Maplewood, we had just finished all of our snow removal, cleaning out our driveways and everything, and they've come in and put a nice three-foot berm or so in front of our driveways, which I know that they have a hard job, but there's two things that I think could help improve this. One, we used to have a deal with the city plow driver, he used to, he had an agreement with all four corners that he could put the snow up into our yards, nobody had any problem with that. That way, our streets stay open, and it's not a big mess. Well, over time, we've gotten new drivers, and I guess the word hasn't gotten passed down, and now they, for some reason, they're staying three foot from our curbs. And after reading your new snow removal plan for this winter, I understand it, they're trying not to throw so much snow onto sidewalks, well, we have no sidewalks in our neighborhood, so it really makes no difference. But I think what would really help and save everybody a lot of frustration, because there was a lot of words said, especially Saturday, after we got all that mess cleared out and then had to start over again, if the city could develop a snow removal schedule, like they have for the streets over in Spokane, in other words, if we knew that they were coming into our neighborhoods, say between eight o'clock in the morning or ten o'clock in the morning, you know, somewhere, a couple, three or four hour even window, then we wouldn't be out there wasting our time just to have it blown back in again. I mean, I know a lot of times, depending on the road situations, they can be delayed at different places, but if there was some sort of schedule that we could at least look at, go up on the city website and actually say, okay, they're supposed to be in our neighborhood at this time, no reason to go out there yet, I think it would help, and it would be actually a good PR for the people, because they're getting really tired of multiple, well, doing the same job over and over again. That's all I have.
Again, we'll talk a little bit about that later, but thanks for your comments. Anyone else? Seeing none, we have no new business tonight, we do have one ordinance, and that's dealing with the St. Joan of Arc Annexation.
Move to place the ordinance, St. John, Joan of Arc Annexation File Number A-16-05, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for annexation of property consisting of approximately 9.421 acres, located at the northeast quarter section 31, township 51 North, range 4 West, Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning of said annexed property, a single-family residential R1, providing for the amendment to the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance, St. Joan of Arc Annexation File Number A-16-05, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Shannon?
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Next up is administrative staff reports, we have two on the agenda, but we're only going to do the one tonight, correct?
That's correct, but Paul will be here to take any questions.
So the first one is a membrane filtration pilot project report, John Beecham. I think we've heard about the membrane and the filtration, this is an ongoing process, so we appreciate your continued efforts on this.
Well, I sincerely hope this is the last report. As mentioned, I'm John Beecham, Utilities Manager. Before I launch into this report, I do want to introduce two people in the audience. We have Adam Tate, our chief operator. Adam was largely responsible for constructing the actual project, pipes and tanks and all of that. And then, two down is Monica Ott, Monica's our environmental specialist, and she did the bulk of the technical review on the reports the JUB provided us, really dove into the numbers, so, without those two people, this project would have been much different and probably less successful. As far as my report tonight, I'll try and keep this somewhat short, it's a summary of a summary of a summary, so it shouldn't be too difficult, but I do want to touch back on the background and goals of the project, as well as go through what was actually done, and then results and next steps. Effective December 1st, 2014, the city had a new discharge permit for our wastewater treatment plant. In that permit, the probably most publicized thing was the new phosphorus requirements. We're going from a discharge allowance, basically, of roughly 2,100 parts per billion to about 75, that's a pretty substantial reduction. You can see, it goes from about 70% removal of what comes in to about 99%. We do have eight years to develop a plant that is capable of doing this, and this project is one step in that path. Outlined in red here is the pilot testing, where we're verifying that our selected technology works. Immediately before this was the most recently completed upgrade at the plant, the headworks and equalization project, and the next step will be design of our tertiary upgrades. As I mentioned, we recently completed flow equalization, which will allow for this facility to be constructed to treat the average flow throughout the day and not the peak, when everybody comes home for, from work to dinner, or wakes up in the morning. The four goals we had for this project were first to prove that we could actually accomplish that 75 parts per billion goal reliably, so that we would only do one upgrade. Second goal was to maintain competitive pricing as we go into the procurement process. Third goal was to inform our future design team to make good decisions with solid data, rather than just use textbook values. And the fourth goal was to provide a training opportunity for our staff, who in about three years now are going to, or, excuse me, five years now, will have this multimillion-dollar facility turned over to them to run and care for, we'd like them to know what they're doing when they get to that stage. A little bit about what a membrane is, membrane, just the bulk definition of it, is just a piece of plastic with a bunch of small holes in it. In our case, they've taken those pieces of plastic and wrapped them into straw shapes, and you can see on the left here, those, many of those little straws are then encapsulated in a bigger module. The water flows into the big module and then goes into the little straws, where it is then cleaned, because those pore sizes are so small, particles can't get through there. One thing that happens with those small holes is they tend to plug up, so in our pilot project, we also tested several different technologies to remove particles before they get to those final filtration, the final membrane filtration step. And within our pilot building, we tested one technology called a plate settler, we also tested dissolved air flotation, and a high-rate clarifier system that had several chemicals added to it. As I mentioned, our crew built most of this, or assembled most of this, this is a skid unit that arrived on the back of a truck, they put it together, put it in the building, and then plumbed everything together. This is what it looked like when it was done, doesn't really capture the amount of pipes crisscrossing everything in there. Timeline was installed right at this time last year, commissioned in February and run through September of this year, or, sorry, that should say September 2017. Two additional studies were done in May or June of 2017, again, my mistake on the typo. We performed thousands of lab tests on this, that was done in-house, and then with additional quality assurance from contract labs, and our operators made daily rounds and performed process adjustments on the actual operating of the system. The first bullet really summarizes my presentation, the project was successful and our goals were met, and our report was delivered to EPA and DEQ by the November 30th deadline, just about a month ago now. First goal was to prove that the technology works, my red line on here approximates our working goal of 40 parts per billion, that's to give us an amount of comfort that, if that limit is 75, we don't want to be at 74 and three-quarter, that puts us into a pretty dangerous place to be. The average, and you can average this several different ways, so I will say the average was about 28 parts per billion, was the quality of water produced. That's a balancing act, you can turn up the chemical and turn down the loading to each individual membrane and achieve slightly better results at a higher unit cost, so this doesn't necessarily reflect the limits of technology, nor does it reflect exactly where we would operate in the future. Second goal was to allow for competitive pricing, what we have here are the three modules that we tested side by side, you'll see that their averages were all below that 40 parts per billion. What this means is that all three of those modules qualify to go into our eventual design, that will allow us to bid them against each other, rather than just select one and negotiate a contract with that supplier. Third goal was to allow efficient design, and this is where those thousands of lab tests really come into play. Our staff and then our future design team will be able to use real local data based on the quality of our water as it would enter this treatment technology, and that should allow us to design the right system at the right size and the right loading rates. We also were able to eliminate one technology for the pretreatment phase that removes the solids, we did some testing, and a technology that uses a chemical called a polymer that binds everything together will also carry, that polymer will also carry through and blind those small holes that I talked about, so we don't want to use that technology. That's a pretty useful thing to learn, it sounds like an easy thing to say, but knowing what we don't want is just as important as knowing what we do want. And goal number four, provide training opportunity, I think Adam could attest to the fact that we provided a lot of training opportunity over the last year, and a lot of work went into this, which is both educational and definitely a burden on the staff. Our next steps, as we go forward from here, are to secure financing for the project, the membrane portion of this next step is only a fraction of what the actual project entails, we have to get the water to the building, get the appropriate chemical holding facilities in place, perform a few other plant upgrades, since we'll have a construction crew on site. So the overall project is in the neighborhood of 24, 25 million dollars at the planning stages, which was in 2012, 2013 timeframe. Those numbers shouldn't be used exactly today, but that's the neighborhood of the size of project we're looking at.
John, is that in addition to the 13, 14 million we've already spent?
That's correct. In order to finance that, we've negotiated an offer of a loan from DEQ, a low-interest state revolving fund loan, I'll be bringing that back with more information for your consideration at the next council meeting. We'll also be negotiating a design contract to perform the design work, as well as to guide us through the procurement steps over the next couple of years, and that will be brought back at a near-future council meeting, not the next council meeting. Following that, we will design it, build it, and operate it. With that, answer any questions.
Questions, John?
No. John, you mentioned earlier that your current process gets it down to 40 parts per billion, correct, on average, the phosphorus?
Our current process gets it down to about 300, 400 parts per billion.
Oh.
I'm sorry if I misspoke.
What was that average with the red line on there? That one?
That's what came out of this test facility.
Oh, okay.
So with our trial-sized version, we were able to achieve that.
So, okay, but we can actually operate at 70, 75?
Yes, our permit limit, it's actually a pounds-based permit limit, so as our flow increases, the concentration goes down, and these numbers are in concentrations. We'll start slightly over 100, and as the growth projections come to, into actuality, we'll be down at that 75 level around 2031, I think, is the planning date.
Oh, so we're not there yet?
We're not there yet.
Okay.
And, sort of diving into the details, I don't have a slide for this, we aren't intending to construct this in such a way that we have to spend a lot of extra money on energy and a lot of extra money on chemicals to meet a limit that we don't have for the future, so it's going to be a phased installation once we get into the actual design and construction.
Okay, that's kind of where I was going, but that answers my question, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, John.
Thanks for your time.
Again, you made it, you put it in terms that we can understand, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned, a few minutes ago, item B under Administrator Staff Reports has been removed. Mayor Comments have two. Chief hold posted or communicated some actions of our police department, a veteran passed away, and our police department responds to all those deaths, and when they found out the gentleman was a veteran, our officers went over and purchased a flag out of their own funds, so it could be, he could be draped, and again, that's just another outstanding indication of the service, or indication of the outstanding service that our police department provides, so please pass our thanks on our respect for those folks who did that.
Thank you.
Get back to Barry and Bob, your timing was very good. I asked Shelley if Paul Kenny and she and myself and Linda Wilhelm could meet this afternoon to talk about snow plowing, and there's all sorts of comments on Facebook, both good and bad. And so what we talked about was, you know, the fact that we do have a policy and a plan in place, while we think we do a great job, improvements can always While we think we do a great job, improvements can always be made. Logical things like what Barry brought up as far as, you know, can we plow to one side? I don't have an answer to that, but it's something that we can look at. And, you know, what I would like to say is the folks that are out there plowing, you know, we hear, I hear comments or see comments where people are complaining because the streets aren't plowed. So they're out plowing, then we hear comments and complaints that they're plowing at night and keeping them awake. The problem is we got guys running 12-hour shifts at a time. It's, you know, it's, I don't know how, I know Counselor Thorson has gone on a ride along, as I recall, on a snow plowing. It's not an easy job.
You can do it.
And then they have to have a minimum of eight hours off, and then they have to get back out and plow. So we, do we run it in one shift with everybody? Do we run it in two shifts? You have to anticipate what the weather's going to do, what the temperatures are going to do. I know we were talking in one of the recent snow events we had, there was about a two-hour period by the time the snow felt where it started freezing, we had to get it removed. I mean, it was a very short window, very small window. That being said, I think our folks do a tremendous job, and we can always improve. And so what we did is we talked with Paul Kenny about it, and I think Linda suggested maybe coming back with a presentation prior to the first event next year to let us know what information has been gleaned from the concerns, the complaints, the compliments received. Again, the fact that we have a plan in place and we have a policy as to how it's done, it may not be the best way, and I think we're open to that. So it is something that we will look at. People complain about ruts in the road. Well, it's pretty tough. You know, you plow the roads and you have a little bit of compact, and then it thaws out, and then it freezes, and people are driving on it. And, you know, we are in North Idaho. I think our staff does a very good job of trying to keep the road safe, trying to keep them plowed. I hear comments or comparisons between Post Falls and how we don't measure up to Coeur d'Alene or Spokane, and I would respectfully disagree because I drive Coeur d'Alene every day, and I'm in Spokane quite often. I think our guys do a great job. And we had one issued, or one email we received today or comment that when you have to have a special email address to field complaints, something's wrong. Well, here's a reason for that. You can leave a voice message, and they will get back to it when they can get to it, or you can send an email which goes out to four or five supervisors all at once. So if there is an issue, if it's brought up via the email, someone will be in contact or it will get to our supervisors who will be in contact with the operators, and we will try to address it. I would encourage everyone to please notify the city if you see issues, if you see slick roads that haven't been sanded. You know, our folks go out and they attend to the intersections that are historically slippery. But if there are others that need to be addressed, please let us know. We'll get guys out there. But again, I just want to say we do accept and welcome the comments, even though they're, if they're negative, it's all right, we can learn from them. Linda, what else we missed? Anything that we talked about?
No, I just, I feel like they do a good job, and I know that some of the side streets are pretty hard to navigate. But we have 14 miles of roads or something around that, something like that.
More than that.
14, isn't that right?
No, we got hundreds.
500 lane miles.
Okay, but the city's 14 miles long or something?
I think it is, we're 14, yeah.
But anyway, my point is that the roads going north and south, except for the main one, Spokane Street, Chase, Idaho, the little roads going north and south seem like they get the least amount of traffic, so they're plowed last. So, and I happen to live off of one of those, and so the snow gets really deep and you slide all around. And then when the plows catch up, obviously, they come and plow them. So I just think that maybe by the time next year rolls around, if we could have some education on the Post Falls channel and on the website and kind of get the information out to people on the schedule, sort of like Bob was talking, I think. And I think that'll help the whole situation very much. I think if people are informed, they're going to be a lot happier.
Yeah. And the snow berm's are difficult, and I know you two gentlemen who are here, a lot of council meetings, you hear every year we talk about snow gates. And do they work, do they not work? But Paul, well, you know, we've talked about it, we will reevaluate. So again, we do appreciate your comments and those comments we receive, even if we don't like what they say, you know, because it might be negative and nasty. It's how we learn and how we improve, and I welcome continued comments. Carrie?
I had one question that he might have answered in your meeting today, because there's different, every winter is different. Sometimes it's light fluffy pretty snow, and sometimes it's a lot of ice like we have now. And so I think they were using the grater, that they don't usually use the grater. The grater was rolling it up, and I have anecdotal evidence from my husband's four-foot berm. But it's different than when the plow goes by and the snow is dispersed that way versus the grater rolling it and packing it into. But every winter it's different, so you can make a plan based on this winter, and next year we might get 12 feet of really light fluffy snow. So it's a tough one, but I like that schedule. And just paying attention to maybe not pile the snow in front of a bank of mailboxes, that was one thing, in the middle of a block. So there's a lot of things that can be done without really having to change the whole program.
Well, and I think, as Bob said, you know, there's turnover, you get new people. And it's just a matter of, you know, reeducate and bringing everybody up to speed. So again, keep your comments coming, and, but Paul, please pass my thanks on to your staff and your crew that I think do a tremendous job of plowing the streets. Council comments? Carrie?
Former Post Falls Police Officer Jason Hunt in the house. Andor, he came because Andor is being retired, and he was, I believe, the original owner, oh, not owner, handler. But there's more than just being a handler. The dogs live with these families, and I know he's got a son here too. So I think that's quite a testament to our canine that Jason is here to show respect and for the Coeur d'Alene High School kids. Steve Anthony, right down here, brand-new council member, representing Coeur d'Alene High School, class of '70, so.
Oh, you are old. I graduated with you.
Let me get up there.
I'm sorry, Carrie, I didn't realize he graduated with you. I did not mean that to you.
When I said that, I was going to say, I wonder if they remember that I said the year too. And I do want you to know, when Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene are playing each other, I'm wearing black and orange. When we're not, I'm cheering you on, so.
Ditto. Any other comments? We do need an executive session tonight.
Hella?
15?
I was going to say 20 minutes.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant Idaho Code 74-2061B to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Further, that no action will be taken during this session, and the session will last approximately 20 minutes.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. And before we enter executive, I forgot during my announcements on the email address for snow problems, it is snow worries, S-N-O-W-W-O-R-R-I-E-S, at postfallsidaho.org. So if you have concerns, email it to that. And with that, we will enter executive session.
Dropped you off.
Call the meeting back to order. Are there any motions to come forward?
Jurn.
Dropped you off.
Yeah.
Called the meeting back to order. Are there any motions to come forward?
Adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.